And immediately following a moment of silence for Officer Delbert Gray. An officer from the city of Rock Springs for over twenty years. Huge loss to this community, served this community. Thank you very much. Start with roll call.
Counselor Windor.
Here.
Halter.
Here.
West.
Savage.
Here.
Zilada.
Here.
Dadi.
Demus.
Here.
Tate.
Here.
Mayor Como.
Here. Um, we're gonna excuse Counselor West tonight. They brought a beautiful baby boy into the world yesterday. Um, Cashton. And we wish Keaton Dana well. Um, he's probably watching the meeting right now knowing Keaton. But um, yeah, that's exciting news and we wish them all well, hope everyone's doing okay. And counselors with that, um, our first line of business would be the approval of the minutes. Special counsel meeting of September ninth, two thousand nineteen, and the city council meeting minutes of September seventeen, two thousand nineteen. What's your pleasure? Councilman Schlatter?
Special counsel, September ninth, city meeting.
We do have a motion to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, we're gonna move right into our bid opening section item number one. We have the Bunning Park area rehabilitation phase two project. And it looks like we're gonna have two bidders, the first being Jackman Construction here in Rock Springs. The second being Wiley Construction here in Rock Springs. Bid number one, Jackman Construction. Do we have a bid bond attached? Total bid amount? Eighty-nine thousand five hundred. Eighty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. Second bidder, Wiley Construction. Bid bond is attached. Total bid? Hundred and eleven thousand sixty-eight dollars. One eleven zero six eight. This will be turned over to staff for approval and recommendation. And this will bring us on to the two thousand twenty concrete replacement phase one project bids. Have one bidder, Ebernardi Construction Company, Rock Springs, Wyoming. Bid bond is attached. Total bid? Three hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight eighty. Three seventy-seven eight eighty. And this bid will be turned over to the Department of Engineering for review and recommendation. Okay, this is gonna bring us on to the appointment section of our agenda, Mr. President. Members of the council, I submit to you the name of Hank Kettleson to fill the unexpired term of Christine Garbet on the Community Fine Arts Center Board.
Counsel, Hank Kettleson has stepped up to fill the unexpired term for Christine Garbet on the Fine Arts Center Board. We have a motion to approve. Thank you, Mr. Tate. Second?
Second.
Choice. Um, roll call please.
Counselor Halter. Savage.
Yes.
Zilada.
Yes.
Dadi.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Windor.
Yes.
Mayor, uh, sorry.
Yes.
Awesome. Alright, Mayor, you have your appointment.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. We're gonna get on to our presentations and proclamations portion of our agenda and the, um, the first item we have under presentations and proclamations, Sweetwater County Library System, Jason Grubb, Director, uh, is gonna speak about the Children's Discovery Center, which you've all heard about at the Rock Springs Library, which will take action under new business item two, uh, Jason. And just so everybody knows, if you get up there, will you push the button, make sure the microphone's on, speak into the mic so everybody at home can hear.
Okay, perfect. Uh, I'm mostly here tonight to answer any questions since this is a funding request later on and it's a new business item. I also wanted to make sure everyone was familiar with the project. I think most of you have seen it on Sweetwater now. What we're looking to do is create a children's discovery center, so think of a children's museum, library, hybrid. Uh, it's actually something that Jana Pastor kicked off. She was thinking about this in the terms of a children's museum and then approached us at the library to see if we would have any interest in creating that space. And I, of course, did a little Googling and I found that a lot of libraries are moving in this direction. The Queens Library in New York City already has a children's discovery center. There's one in Dallas. And the Laramie County Library has children's center activities on their children's floor. All we're going to do is take all these items, put them in one place rather than scatter them across the floor. So we've been out fundraising. Jana's been doing the bulk of that and she's spoken to a lot of private individuals, different organizations. We've written grants. We have a lot of funds coming in and we're approaching the city and asking for, uh, some additional dollars. It's going on the city portion of the library, the part that the city owns, and it will go in the basement, which is currently the children's department. The children's department is moving upstairs onto the top floor where the adult collection is. And the adult collection is being condensed and, uh, reworked. If we do our job right, patrons will hopefully not notice any diminishment of services, but instead an expansion and new opportunities for kids to interact with the library. Do you have any questions?
Counsel? Well, I'd just like to give you, um, just an attaboy. You guys, this has been a long time coming and Jana Pastor, who's been just, uh, a huge asset to our downtown museum and all the work that she does and she's hiding in the back and she does not like to be, she doesn't like, don't even wanna point at her because she'll leave the room. But what a great idea. So this all started way back when and we thought maybe, we didn't want it to leave the downtown and it was brought to our attention that maybe we'd make the museum of its home and then that didn't work out so well. But you guys just accepted this with open arms and when we went out to, uh, to visit, it's just gonna be a, just a huge, huge, um, positive influence on our kids downtown. So I thank you, Jason, for all the work that you guys do over there and, uh, we're, we're more than happy to help out where we can. Just wanna see this be a huge success. Jana, thank you. Um, you wanna give a speech? But, um, Counsel, if you, you don't, um, have any questions, we'll be dealing with this under our new business item number two. Um, but, um, just great job. I'm excited to see this get up and running and, uh, a lot of positive community support, looks like. It's gonna be exciting.
Yeah, I think people are excited. In terms of timeline, we're looking to clear the space by the end of the year and then we'll start trying to set up the exhibits. We've been awarded a few grants already so we can start purchasing some of the exhibits. They take anywhere from four to five months to actually build and get out to our area. But best case, we'll have this up and running by the spring. I think it'll be a really neat addition to the community and people will be excited. So if you have any questions along the way, you see things moving, you get concerns, you have a citizen that has a concern, just direct it to us. Uh, we are very sensitive that it's the downtown library with a lot of history and we don't wanna lose any of that. Our goal really here is to expand services, not take anything away.
Great. Thanks, Jason. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item number two, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I'm gonna call you up if I could. You hate it, I know it. Just maybe refresh our memories on some critical dates like, um, Girls' Night Out and what do you have going on, um, for this month?
So, thank you. Um, we have Ladies' Night Out coming up. This is an event that we got a grant from the Wyoming Breast Cancer Initiative Program for, to hold, um, for the whole community. And so we're trying to include Green River and Rock Springs um, at an event that's completely free for the community to attend. And, um, it is Ladies' Night Out. We're focusing on breast cancer awareness and giving information about breast cancer screening and things you can do to reduce your risk of getting breast cancer. Um, we've all come to believe that the pink breast cancer ribbon is kind of a universal symbol of, for us, um, for all cancers and trying to get out there and educate the community on how they can reduce their risk of all cancers and, um, and how to get screened for those kinds of cancers and then the knowledge that we have a cancer center here and yet you don't have to travel a long distance to get treatment for cancer if you're diagnosed. So, we, we like to do events in the community and this is one that we were able to get a grant for and so we want to let women in the community know that that's happening this Saturday night. And it's from six to nine PM at the Bunning Freight Station downtown. I know that there are lots of events in town this, this weekend, but, um, if you have the time, come on down and see us. We're gonna have some speakers come from Huntsman. Um, Dr. Freer is a radiologist there. Dr. Peretta is a surgeon at Huntsman and then our own Dr. Brienne Crofts is gonna speak for a few minutes. And so, um, we'll have lots of good information and then resources from the hospital that we have to offer, the dietitian, um, Wyoming Cancer Resource Services who have, um, screening opportunities for people who may not have insurance or have very little insurance and, and haven't been screened or don't have the means to get screened. She can help you find, um, a way to do that. And so she'll have applications there that people can fill out and so we're hoping that we have a really good crowd and that people come and get good information, maybe learn something that they didn't know already about breast cancer. Um, thus the masquerade party and unmasking breast cancer. So, we would appreciate it if you'd come on out and see and have a good time. Um, and then, yes, um, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month and so we're holding Paint the Town Pink throughout the entire month of October. And so we're hoping to encourage businesses to call us and register to decorate your business in pink so that we can raise awareness throughout the entire month. And, um, and we have judges, including yourself, who are gonna be going around the last week in October. Um, we're gonna have a team from Rock Springs and a team of judges from Green River and they're gonna judge each other. So, one night will be Rock Springs going to Green River and looking at all the businesses in person and then making a decision on who's the best. And then we'll award the winner from each city at the city council meeting in November, we hope. So, thank you.
Great. Any questions? Well, I, you guys do just a great job and it's, uh, nice to see, uh, working so hard to get the information out there. The, um, the treatment center is fabulous. What an outstanding facility, great staff. We just, um, toured that center recently for the fight. And just a great job. With that, we have a proclamation we'd like to and kick this month off. The proclamation reads, whereas while considerable progress has been made in the fight against breast cancer, it remains the most commonly diagnosed cancer and the second leading cause of death among women in the United States. And in two thousand nineteen, the American Cancer Society estimates that more than two hundred and sixty-five thousand women in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer and approximately forty-one thousand seven hundred and sixty will die as a result of the disease. And October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, an annual campaign to increase awareness about the disease. And during this month, we reaffirm our commitment to support breast cancer research and to educate all citizens about its risks, detection, and treatment. And as we display pink ribbons and wear pink clothing to raise awareness, we also support those courageously fighting breast cancer and honor the lives lost to the disease. And this October, we recognize breast cancer survivors, those battling the disease, their families and friends who are a tireless source of love and in encouragement, and applaud the efforts of our medical professionals and researchers working to find a cure for this deadly disease. And Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an opportunity to unite all citizens in our community to prevent breast cancer deaths through increased education and regular screening. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Timothy A. Como, Mayor of the City of Rock Springs, do hereby declare October two thousand nineteen to be Breast Cancer Awareness Month. In the City of Rock Springs, and we acknowledge the importance of raising awareness of breast cancer in our community as we work to support survivors, those currently battling breast cancer and those who might detect it in its early stages, join the effort in supporting breast cancer awareness by lighting your home or business pink during the month of October. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so get out and get screened. This is the time to get the information and the support you need for that. And, uh, the next item we have, uh, Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and Kayla? Manico is here to say a few words.
Good evening. I wanted to first thank Mayor Como and the council for giving me the opportunity to briefly, briefly speak tonight on such an important topic. Um, breast cancer and domestic violence are both two serious issues that women face. On an average, nearly twenty people per minute are physically abused in the United States. So during a year period, that's over ten million women and men. In two thousand eighteen, the YWCA assisted four hundred and twenty-four clients with just domestic violence throughout Sweetwater County and we also provided over nineteen thousand services for domestic violence. So each year, we return before you to request the month of October to be proclaimed Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We desire for the community to know the domestic violence does happen in our community and I think, um, that's truly important for everybody to understand. It's happening here almost every day and we're working hard to prevent that in the community. So more importantly, we really wanna reach out to those who may be experiencing any form of violence and let them know that they're not alone, that they, we do have services in our community that they can seek. Advocates are available to provide emotional support, assist with protection orders, safety plans, and so much more. The YWCA also operates a twenty-four hour crisis line. And we encourage anybody experiencing any type of violence to call and we're open twenty-four hours. We'll definitely help with whatever we can help with. So while helping those in our community, we're also working on prevention and there's so much that everybody in our community can really do every day to help spread awareness of domestic violence in our community and to help, um, prevent domestic violence. So, if you want more information, call the YWCA. We'd be glad to help bring things to your business, do presentations. Um, but in the month of October, you guys are going to be seeing eleven lit purple trees on Do-Or-Drive. Um, that was sponsored by Simplot, Red Cliff Motel, and Chestnut Lighting. And those eleven trees actually represent the eleven victims that have died because of domestic violence in Wyoming. We're also going to, um, we, we've passed around, purple bracelets are around to businesses, so please take one. We've brought some today for everybody. Wear them, spread awareness, um, pass them out, help prevent and, um, spread awareness of domestic violence. Um, we'll also be holding our twenty-fifth annual candlelight vigil memorial. This year is gonna be a little bit different. We are hosting it at Broadway Theater on October fourteenth at six PM. We do have two speakers coming. Um, they're actually two different authors who are going to speak about their personal experiences with domestic violence. Their books should also be available at the vigil. Um, we'll also have the eleven silhouettes with their stories if you guys are interested. The silhouette stories of those eleven victims in Wyoming who died because of domestic violence will also be at the Rock Springs Chamber of Commerce. If anyone was interested in swinging by and reading those stories, I encourage you to do so. Um, I just wanna thank you guys for your continued support and for the time for letting me come and speak tonight and hopefully spread a little bit of awareness of domestic violence.
Kayla, great job and, uh, appreciate you here, um, bringing this to our attention. We can do what we're going to be there for you, counselors. Um, we do also have a proclamation, offer good, um, proclamation reads, whereas YWCA Center for Families and Children recognizes and anticipates in a public awareness campaign to support National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And Domestic Violence Month provides an excellent opportunities for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the organizations and individuals who buy critical advocacy services and assistance to victims. And on an average, nearly twenty people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner in the United States. During one year, this equates to more than ten million women and men. And domestic violence can take the form of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic abuse. And too often, the victims of domestic violence are children who can have lifelong repercussions from the emotional or physical trauma of being exposed to domestic violence. And domestic violence survivors and their advocates in Sweetwater County have rallied to the cause of victim justice. And the government and citizens of Rock Springs, Wyoming fully recognize the need to treat victims with dignity and compassion. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Timothy A. Como, Mayor of the City of Rock Springs, do hereby declare the month of October two thousand nineteen to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month. In the City of Rock Springs and call upon our citizens to stand together against domestic violence, offer support and understanding to survivors and participate in domestic violence awareness activities. Purple bracelets will be available throughout the community to wear in support of awareness of domestic violence. The twenty-fifth annual Silent Witness Vigil will be October fourteenth at six PM at the Broadway Theater in Rock Springs, Wyoming. Hope to see everybody there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a couple of busy months here, all for good, uh, good cause. Counselors, this is going to move us on to the public hearings portion of our agenda. And item number one under the public hearings is a public hearing on an application submitted by Melissa Reagan of Sherman and Howard LLC to consider amending Article thirteen dash eight one four, Wireless Telecommunications of the ordinances of the City of Rock Springs, of which will take action under ordinance two thousand nineteen dash one five. Is there anyone here wishing to speak? In regards to this public hearing? Councilman Halter?
I just had a question.
Sure.
Notice that. Section. Is that? Act. I, I believe they are, uh, I will look into that, just to make absolutely certain, don't have any sorts of issues, but they are specific. Some particular ordinance, essentially because it deals with what we call wireless communications facilities. Sort of, but we have done, so I will make sure we're not excluding. The way.
Thank you, Rick. Any others? Question? Comment? Hearing done, we're gonna move on to the second item. A public hearing on an application submitted by Paul D. Kowicz, Director of Engineering and Operations of, and Public Services for the City of Rock Springs to consider amending Article thirteen dash nine oh six, Preliminary Development Plan and PUD Approval, Major Changes of the Ordnance of the City of Rock Springs to Correct Numbering Errors Pertaining to Administrative Procedures, of which will take action under ordinance two thousand nineteen dash one six. Is there anyone wishing to speak in regards to this public hearing? Hearing done. I'm going to close the public hearings portion of our agenda and open it, uh, up to the petitions section. Uh, I would ask if there's anyone here tonight wishing to speak, um, or address the city council on any issue whatsoever. This would be your time to do so. Anyone? I'm going to close the petition section of our agenda and move on to the council committee and board reports, counselors. We have item number one, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board Meeting Minutes of August eighth, two thousand nineteen. And we have the recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Board uh, for fees related to the use of the golf simulator being installed at the civic center. Are there any questions, um, comments? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve, uh, council committee and board reports and place on file.
So moved, Your Honor?
We do have a motion to approve and place on file. Do we have a second? Second's been called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, this is gonna bring us on to the correspondence section of our agenda. We have, um, uh, if you could take a look, three items under correspondence. Uh, if there are no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion. Do we have a question?
Oh, I was, I had, uh, council committee and board reports.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Um.
I, I wanted to, uh, amend the police department. You guys have been rocking it, uh, here lately. I was, um, I don't know if there was a lot done about Officer Johnson, uh, saved a person's life. Uh, that was really amazing, exciting. And then Sergeant Robinson on that whole case about the, um,
That was outstanding.
Yeah, but I don't know how many people that person, uh, harmed, but it was hu, I don't know, a hundred? I mean, it's just amazing. And that was twenty years ago, nineteen ninety-four, right? And, is that correct, close?
Your Honor, that,
I'm winging it.
That case was, uh, nineteen ninety.
Ninety-one, excuse me. Okay, even further back. So that's pretty exciting. And then, um, Max found three guys hiding in the bushes. And how did, how did that go? Did they, did they come out or did he have to go in after him? I'm curious how that went.
Uh, they did, uh, come out.
That was smart.
That was smart, yeah.
Yeah, I've, I've helped Max with his training. Um, you don't, you don't want it.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, congratulations. Keep up the good work. That's awesome.
Eric Council, savage, appreciate it. They, our officers have hard and course Manning's all
Yeah, very well done. Um, and also commend the department, uh, and, uh, bar chief today for, um, um, Mr. Gray's funeral. You guys did an outstanding job. Proud to, um, see everybody there and, um, dressed for the occasion and the, uh, the flag ceremony. Made me proud to be the mayor. Yes, absolutely. Job. Are there any other council committee or board report? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve and place on file.
Double.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Um, this is gonna bring us to correspondence then, and then we have the items from correspondence, councilors. Um, don't have, uh, questions. I would also entertain a motion to approve and place on file.
So.
We have a motion, um, just a kind of a shout out to, you saw the, uh, letter regarding the I S O, um, classification. Jim, Chief, you wanna tell us what that's all about? Why, why we should be excited and the community should be as excited before we, uh, move to the next step?
Thank you. We're at a review. Insurance services, uh, a cheer. Just this past week, we received approved by in class of solid public class. It's county, probably, out, it's good news. Our insurance premiums, on some level, probably, particularly policies in person. See, to this point. It's in section. Fund, press fires, to prevent the fire. To recognize at a higher level, has
Yeah, that's exciting. Uh, it's, it's an, it's an odd way, um, interesting to see all the, um, intricate parts of the rating, uh, that, um, that come about there. But job well done, and hopefully that'll, that'll save some of our community business, business people some, um, some funding for, for insurance and, um, uh, the, the way they also rated that, it just seems to be, you really gotta follow that, the way your rating goes, 'cause the reference back to what you may have went in before and what you are now, and, and, uh, there's a, there's a lot in, uh, details there. But job well done. We appreciate that. Great for the, uh, councilor's side, entertain a motion to, um, approve and place on file, all of course. Um, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Can bring us on to the bills and claims section of our agenda. Item one, the bills and claims for October first, two thousand nineteen.
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Wendorf?
I move to approve the bills and claims for October first, twenty nineteen.
We do have a motion to approve the bills and claims for October first, two thousand nineteen. Is there a second? Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Just gonna bring us to the salaries for September twenty-third, two thousand nineteen. What's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Wendorf?
I move to approve the salaries for September twenty-third, twenty nineteen.
We do have a motion to approve the salaries for September twenty-third, two thousand nineteen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Gonna move on to new business. Item number one, the request from the Finance Department for approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty final budget. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Tate? Do you have a motion to approve this request? Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number two, the request from the Sweetwater County Library System for an additional funding appropriation for a children's discovery center to be installed at the Rock Springs Library in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Savage?
Move to approve that request.
We have a motion to honor this request. Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show no opposed, and, um, it's gonna move us on to the resolution section of our agenda. Uh, resolution number one, two thousand nineteen dash one, three, eight.
A resolution accepting and approving and enforcing underage drinking contract from the Wyoming Association of Sheriffs and Chiefs of Police.
Counselors, what's your pleasure? Councilman Halter? We do have a motion to approve two thousand nineteen, one thirty-eight. Is there a second?
Second.
Second has been called. Roll call.
Counselor Savage?
Yes.
Chalata?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Tate? Wendorf?
Yes.
Halter?
Yes.
Mayor Como?
Yes. Item number two, resolution two thousand nineteen dash one thirty-nine.
A resolution accepting and approving a contract with Frontier Ford in the amount of two hundred, nine thousand, eight hundred, eight dollars, or eight hundred, eight dollars and zero cents, authorizing Timothy A. Como as Mayor of the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, Matthew L. McBurnett, City Clerk of the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, to execute said contract on behalf of the City of Rock Springs.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Savage?
I move to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash one thirty-nine.
Do you have a motion to approve two thousand nineteen, one thirty-nine? Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Counselor Chalata?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Wendorf?
Yes.
Halter? Savage?
Yes.
Mayor Como?
Yes. Item number three, resolution two thousand nineteen dash one, four, zero.
A resolution accepting and approving Amendment One to the Grant Agreement between the Wyoming Business Council, Community Development Division, and the City of Rock Springs, authorizing Timothy A. Como as Mayor of the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, Matthew L. McBurnett, as City Clerk of the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, to execute said Amendment One on behalf of the city.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Wendorf?
I move to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash one, four, zero.
Do you have a motion to approve resolution two thousand nineteen, one, four, zero? Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Counselor Zadi?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Wendorf?
Yes.
Halter? Savage?
Yes.
Chalata?
Yes.
Mayor Como?
Yes. From the Housing Authority, resolution two thousand nineteen dash one, forty-one.
An amended resolution authorizing Timothy A. Como acting in his capacity as Chairman of the Board for the Rock Springs Housing Authority to accept an amended capital fund program amendment for the fiscal year twenty twenty for the purpose of receiving two hundred eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars, authorizing supervisor of the housing community resources to execute the capital fund program.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Mr. President?
I move to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash one, four, one.
We do have a motion to approve two thousand nineteen, one, forty-one. Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Counselor Demus?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Wendorf?
Yes.
Halter?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Chalata?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Mayor Como?
Yes. Item number five, resolution two thousand nineteen, one, forty-two.
A resolution accepting grant funds from the U.S. Bureau of Justice Assistance Program for the fiscal year twenty nineteen, full approved S partnership.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Mr. President?
I move to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash one, forty-two.
We do have a motion to approve resolution two thousand nineteen, one, forty-two. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Counselor Tate?
Yes.
Wendorf?
Yes.
Halter?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Chalata?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Mayor Como?
Yes. Item number six, resolution two thousand nineteen, one, forty-three.
A resolution authorizing and directing Timothy A. Como as Mayor of the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, Matthew L. McBurnett, as City Clerk of the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, to accept and approve a budget revision, the budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty
Counsel, what's your pres- what's your preference?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Wendorf?
I move to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash one, four, three.
We do have a motion to approve two thousand nineteen, one, forty-three. Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Counselor Wendorf?
Yes.
Halter? Savage?
Yes.
Chalata?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Mayor Como?
Yes. And item number seven, resolution two thousand nineteen dash one, forty-four.
A resolution authorizing Timothy A. Como as Mayor of the City of Rock Springs and Matthew L. McBurnett, as City Clerk of the City of Rock Springs, to execute an agreement for disbursement, receipt, and use of grant funds with the Sweetwater County Joint Travel and Tourism Board.
Counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilman Sha- Chalata? We have a motion to approve two thousand nineteen, one, forty-four. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Counselor Halter? Savage?
Yes.
Chalata?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Wendorf?
Yes.
Mayor Como?
Yes. Counsel, this is gonna bring us to our ordinances, um, of which item number one is Ordinance two thousand nineteen dash one, five on first reading.
An ordinance amending Article thirteen, eight, the Zone District Regulations of the ordinances of the City of Rock Springs entitled Wireless Communications.
Any questions or comments, and I'm sure by second reading we'll have some, some information available from Mr. Beck with Counselor Halter. Item number two, ordinance two thousand nineteen dash one, six, first read.
An ordinance amending Article thirteen, nine, of the Zone District Regulations of the ordinances of the Ci- City of Rock Springs entitled Administrative Procedures to Correct Numbering Errors.
And just an announcement, um, Mr. Kalsich and I will travel to Cheyenne tomorrow. Have a slid board meeting Thursday morning, early, on the bitter um, not sure what's gonna happen. Every time we look at the numbers, it seems to be diminished even more. But we'll do what we can, hope to come back with, um, a successful grant to at least address, um, phase one of the project. So, with that,
Honor?
uh, Councilman Zadi?
If I could real quick, I should have commented prior to, um, correspondence with the I S O. But one thing I wanted to kind of clarify here, too, that yes, there should be some premiums they didn't realize, but I, according to the letter here, that it's not effective till January one. Um, so moving forward as homeowners property turns to, that's when that new beginning takes effect from January one forward. So, people out there watching this, premiums going down, not it's gonna be, takes a little time and it'll get through, but I wanted to just kind of clarify that.
Uh, that's good information. Thanks, Rob. Um, with that, counsel, and no further business to come before this governing body, this meeting is adjourned.